It looks different than what it has in the long term.
Thank you so much Jim, because that, I mean, it could be Brent, even though we've got overseers, you've got to have folks to oversee, because one person can't run the show. And Daryl stepped in immediately allowing the injuries to come down and.
Six or seven, five, six, seven, Jim, average?
I'm looking seven right now.
Okay, so tremendous, and again, folks, that's a win-win. It's a win for them and a win for the county. Rather than paying them to upkeep that is required from the being incarcerated, for them to be able to cover the expense that we're not having to pay additional dollars for is just a win for them. They're glad to get out, they're glad to be doing things for it and sitting there, etc., so, but anyway, it's just a good, good point we had now and we're making good progress. Again, those folks need it all to act right. I want to throw a couple more figures at you and then we're going to move off of solid waste. If Brent's already good, you tell him, I just want to emphasize it because this is huge. The tonnage that we were incurred, I went back a year and a half, and we were averaging on a monthly basis, five hundred sixty-three point five-two tons a month. Five hundred sixty-three point five-two tons a month over the last year and a half. That's prior to September one, okay? On September's, it was three hundred and three point six-seven, a reduction, almost just a little under two hundred and sixty tons. A reduction of two hundred and sixty tons. Folks, at three hundred dollars a load being pulled, the amount of tonnage you put on a truck, which Jim alluded to, we initially was at about tenish tons a truck. And they got that up to around fifteen, I've actually seen some steps that's even higher than that versus running tonnage of five point six and eight. Tremendous savings, and it shows in the math of calculation that five hundred sixty-three point five-two tons was averaging us between seventy-six dollars and seventy-eight dollars a ton for it to be loaded up, sent to Mill Point in Murfreesboro, and paying the tipping fees to get rid of it. That's what we were averaging, seventy-six, seventy-eight dollars a ton. October, based on the tonnages that was put in and the cost incurred, we have that figure down to sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents per ton. Seventy-six dollars down to sixty-one dollars. That's a huge savings per ton. And all these folks that identify gets credit for that. That's just earned as just a more efficient operation that's going on. So we're going, we, we, we're making progress, it's going to continue because we've got our hands and arms around it. And these numbers that we're projecting at the end for it to be a budget, a projection that should allow us not to have to borrow a transit note to fund solid waste, next fish for you, that's going to be very positive. Controllers also get tickled dead because, as you remember, when we looked at their letter, they chewed us out. We have badly balanced on the book that caused us to have to put five thousand in. We put a hundred thousand more out of the federal fund floating, plus a transit note. So now we're saying, we don't believe anything's going to happen for the next fish of the year. Now, you know, base can change, but based on what we know and how things are running at this moment, we, we got good hope.
Roddy? Also mentioning to them that even with us not doing that, that's with us paying back.
That is correct.
What we barred.
What the barred is, and Brent alluded to, it does not subtract out the hundred thousand or the twenty-five, it does the transit note portion of that. So back out the hundred, back out the twenty-five, it reduces that minimum balance down to like two oh.
Two oh two.
Two oh two. But again, two oh two versus the money barred and done, still.
And paying back enough.
And paying back enough. Okay, you started, I mentioned it before, Eric, I would just quickly touch the phone here just to make you aware. We were incurring, I look back over the last ten months of this year and what's occurred for November and will occur in December, we're going to incur an expense to you as taxpayers of about probably almost thirteen thousand dollars to get rid of the used tires in this county. Okay? State has put on us an obligation of accepting all used tires from any source, dealers, individuals, etc., so we get them off. And up until this point in time, I'll just be honest with you and apologize at the same time because I was on the budget committee, this budget committee to set the budget for the eighteen, nineteen year which we're in now. I've sat on that budget committee as a member. I did not have knowledge that we were spending that kind of money to get rid of used tires. In fact, I went and pulled the budget and went line by line either of the expenditure for the budget and it is not in there, not one cent is accounted for. So we've got a budget, solid waste, we just talked about, that does not take into account of spending, on the conservative side, ten thousand dollars a year to get rid of tires that we know is being incurred. We incurred that before, and the reason why it's going to bump up higher is because the current commission passed a resolution that says effective January one, there's going to be a charge of two dollars per tire that is brought to the convenience center to be disposed of. What that does is, it gives us a revenue flow to cover an expense that we didn't know we had to cover. And it's a tax, or the, how do you say it, on the user, which puts it at the department plate. You don't dispose the tires, you're not charged. So you and these taxpayers are now picking up a tab for Brent taking his tires up there, hundred, two hundred of his tires, to get rid of for many, many people. So with that being said, these are the guidelines. Tire dealers are going to pay two bucks a tire that they're going to bring to us to dispose of. Households will give you four tires you can bring up and you're not charged. But if your household exceeds four tires, then you too will have to pay two bucks a tire to get rid of. That's on an annual basis. Think fair and reasonable, it's a cost that can be covered. And as such, as the state's identified revenue streams are available to us, if we don't pursue and put the tax burden on the source from which the users benefited from, in my opinion, shame on us that we put on that tax burden on everybody. So that's effective January one, and that cost is going to go up in over in December, like I said, upon the thirteen, based on the tires that we know that exist, the tire dealers, I don't know if you've gone by down ports or co-op up until recently, but they had huge piles of tires out there that they built to get rid of. You notice those stacks are gone. Well, we're going to pick up that tab to get rid of. So that's how I know we're going for that tenish figure that pushes to thirteen. We're averaging a little over a thousand dollars per trailer truck load to get rid of those used tires. And I went and visited, I've visited every tire dealer that I am aware of, and I came up with eleven throughout this county. And personally spoke with each one of them to make sure they understood where we were at, so there's no surprise. And the good folks up on the Manchester Hill County Tire, believe it is. Goodness, I walked in that garage and Barry pulled a vehicle in, and on each side, the tires are stacked from the front all the way to the back to the ceiling. And but based on that, what's outside, he's got a trailer truck going on. So he, he, he got to give it down to us, about June of about twelve thirty-one, otherwise somebody's got a hefty bill to pay if he brings it up to the convenience center. But anyway, I think that puts us in good graces of what we need to be on the tire side. Should, to be fair and honest and completely disclosed, the state requires a tire dealer to collect the dollar thirty-five cents on every tire that they sell. They keep ten cents, a dollar twenty-five cents in the state. Twenty-five cents goes into a fund for grant purposes. Well, good luck with that, twenty-five cents is gone. But the dollar mostly comes back to us in the county. We're having trouble identifying why our amount we receive from the Department of Revenue is so low. We, last year was below like eighteen hundred dollars. And this year it's significantly less than that. And we've raised the questions and we have asked them, and they're doing some research, so maybe we can get our arms around that, the federal revenue from the state on that dollar that we're bringing. But as of now, that's even a question mark, so.
Roddy? Tell them what we've done so we'll have an argument with the state that we're counting and stacking every tire that goes into the trailers. We're used to, they would just fold in there and leave. We didn't ever have a total count of what we sent off. Now, we've counted every tire and we know the exact total of what leaves when the trailer does leave. So we have documentation to go back to the state and say, you know, we sent off this amount of tire for our money.
And, and again, it, it, it's just getting arms around and getting accountability where we're able to identify to the state what the number should be in relation to the amount of money they send to us. Of roughly, it won't be exactly, it should be roughly a dollar per dollar. Tire per dollar, no question. So anyway, we get our arms around that for two, to get that figured. Brandon, how do you know, he makes a comment to this area, if you feel free to make something up.
Just to give a quick update on how we move forward on the, on the solid waste facility we do, we've kind of looked at this a couple different ways. Tuesday night, we're going to have our first meeting of three engineered groups that basically are going to sit down and we've done what's called a request for engineering qualifications, and they're going to lay out what they can do for us. And this is our general overall plan. Currently, if you're familiar, this right here is where we walk through and take that back down. This, this right here, of course, this is the old site up here. We currently have an oversized container here that takes couches, chairs, mattresses, stuff like that. We use it with our own litter patrol team primarily, and if anything that we need to go pick up and citizens can come up there and do that. Your cardboard goes into here, also here, and pretty much cleaned this whole area up and trying to utilize this facility the best we can. Here we got trailers, dry rig containers that we back all the households with up. And our future plan is, like I said, Tuesday, we're going to sit down and try to, we've got a lot of prep work done with this lot. We've worked this now, part of this plan was, we inherited this plan and we've tried to move it forward. There's some, the prep work has been mostly cleaned up, we've pushed a lot of this out of the way. We want to drive this area, we've got to get it paved, we want some open containers here, we want new containers there where people can drive through, make it easy access. And that's where we're heading with the solid waste facility in the future. Should be a better convenience center, should be more easy for our citizens to use and provide more, more services to them. Again, it's going to be a lot of work, work probably won't occur till the spring. We're going to meet with these, these contracts, contractors and the engineers to see what they can offer. There may be some, this may end up being a rental agreement, we've got some ideas floating over that. We may be able to do the prep work and privatize most of the function. Right now, if you didn't know, there's a private contract for Caristar that picks up cardboard. There's a private contract with Prater Farms that picks up household garbage. We have Ivy Lufta's solid weight metal, we have, again, we've got David Reed's company that's doing the oversized garbage. So we're pretty much a, besides the fact it is a county run or county supervised with help from Jim, it's a pretty much a privately ran organization. Grants, we have about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of grant money that's been authorized for us. We've got three engineering firms and hopefully we have a better operation and I predict sometime in the summer. Any questions concerning that, we will wait for the end to have a question, the end of the call. And next slide.
Getting with the solid waste and the, the situation that currently exists between the fifth district and the other four districts. Brent alluded to it just a wee bit, the information we had on that tonnage quite ago just a little bit was in relationship to the county as a whole up until September one. Short after September one, since the compactor up on the hill had broken down at the end of August, the fifth district was forced to, since they has a garbage truck, it could not be, garbage trucks that could not be accommodated up there, was forced to take there the solid waste to Mill Point or other facilities that could accommodate the garbage trucks high deal. I know the word on the street, the public acknowledgement in the newspaper that there's been a lawsuit filed of the city, fifth district, versus the county. At this point in time, it's been filed. Can't get into details of those kind of things because really the details are not known, just to be honest with you. How that thing evolves, it comes about, and we'll see how all that evolves and comes to, to being. The situation is simply from a representative of the fifth district, and I know Brent is in the same arena. We want to be absolutely fair to all the citizens of this county. All citizens have the privilege of being able to bring their solid waste up to the convenience centers. Nobody's turned away or refused regardless of the district that they are from. The situation exists under what we can control and move forward. It's already been alluded to, it's almost a guarantee, well, I'm just going to say it and somebody can correct me, the old compactor, the way that thing is worked, it is history, it is not going to be part of anything that goes forward in the future. Making plans for the next ten, twenty, thirty years and handling our solid waste does evolve around bringing in this new type of means to dispose of it, which is to call these roll-off, rollback type of equipment that trucks deliver, pick up, transport it to the appropriate landfill and deposit it there. So those are the things that is going to come into play into the future. But for my own personal curiosity sake, and I've only been able to come up with data in the month of September, because that's the only month that I'm aware of where we actually had this separation of the total garbage that was being transported, transported from this convenience center up here versus the fifth district, the city transporting their garbage, separating it apart since we did not accommodate the, the garbage truck. So no one makes long-term or definitive decisions based on only one month data, and I acknowledge that right in front, okay? So we can't take these figures to the bank and say, okay, we'll be doing this or we'll be doing that. You need longer trends in order to make sound, good judgment decisions to make sure that the trends hold true. But and, and again, we only got the one month, and we're only sitting here as Brent and myself almost three months into a position that we hold, okay? But trying to make long-term plans in the solid waste, I went back and I just pulled these statistical data. That's all the world is, it's just data, it's just information. You draw your own conclusions, opinions, anything you want to. I'm just going to put your information out in front of you. This county has a residence population of fourteen thousand fourteen, based upon the controllers' numbers, which they used a firm that's identified as E S R I, Environmental Systems Research Institute. And these figures are the population as of being twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen. The county had a population of fourteen thousand fourteen. The fifth district has a total of two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one, which is included in that fourteen thousand figure, okay? Not in addition to, total county's forty, fourteen thousand, fifth district's two thousand seven sixty-one. So roughly, the fifth district makes up nineteen point seven. So I'm just going to say it makes up twenty percent of the population, okay? Fifth district roughly makes up twenty percent of the population of this county. I pulled the tax assessment information from the property assessor's office. These are the values that are identified as being the twenty-five percent assessed value. So if your home is worth a million dollars, they assess that at twenty-five percent or to calculate how much taxes you pay, so they would calculate that at twenty-five percent or apply the tax rate against two hundred fifty thousand. So this figure I'm using for the county is assessed at twenty-five percent, which produces two hundred and fifty-four million, four hundred seventy-three dollars, four hundred and eight cents of assessed value in the county, of county to county. That is for the current tax bills you are receiving and received and are said paid. So the assessed value in the total of the county is two hundred fifty-four million, four hundred seventy-three dollars, I'm sorry, two hundred seventy-four, seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. That's of the assessed value. Okay, so twenty-five percent, I apologize. Taking that assessed value, which is twenty-five percent times the current tax rate, which is two dollars and thirty-eight, thirty-nine cents, times that, it'll produce property taxes of six million, sixty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars. So the property assessed is going to produce, based on our tax of two dollars and thirty-eight, thirty-nine cents, six million, sixty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars. I went to Angela and I said, okay, give me what is the assessed value of the fifth district? And she first, I didn't know why I didn't ask it that way. I first asked her, can you give it by district? And she said, no, we only have the assessed value by the whole county, it's not broken down by the district. And I said, well, I'm interested in the fifth district, and since fifth district also pays city taxes, you're sure that's not, that's not broken down because they would need that to calculate the taxes from the city standpoint? She said, yep, I do, I do have it for the fifth district, but that's only one. The other four are all grouped together. Practice never often you know what it is for the balance of the other four, but not broken down. All right, in the fifth district, the assessed value is forty-six million, three hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars. Again, if that's the assessed value, so it's twenty-five percent, you're going to be taxed again. Again, you've got the county tax rate at two point three eight three nine. So the fifth district produces revenue, property tax of one million, one hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. So of that six million, the fifth district produces one point one million, which is eighteen point twenty-one percent of the total tax, property tax revenue in the county. So we've got twenty percent of the population producing eighteen point twenty-one percent of the property tax. September, we had it broken down, as I alluded to on the solid waste because of the manner in which the city had, the fifth district had to held their tonnage of the solid waste because it could be accepted from the convenience center. We know based on the figures that they have and based on the figures that we have that the total tonnage of solid waste in the month of September is three hundred and three point six-seven tons. It was identified that the fifth district of that was a hundred and thirty-two tons, which includes residential, it's commercial, and it's my understanding that that commercial is being stopped effective January one, and if I'm incorrect on that, I apologize. But as on September, that would have been included in that, the both residential and, and commercial. In September, we had stopped on the convenience center accepting commercial trash of theirs. We do not accept commercial trash if it's identifiable as such at the convenience center anymore. So our tonnage in September between the two is three oh three. Fifth district's one hundred and two, which marks a percentage of forty-three point four six eight percent. Of the tonnage that was in September, the fifth district produced forty-three point four six eight percent of the total tonnage. So twenty percent of the population produced a revenue of eighteen point twenty-one percent, produced forty-three percent of the total waste handled in the month of September. So with that being said, I just throw that in as data for you to look at and say, okay, where's the garbage coming from, solid waste is coming from, who picks up the tab to pay for it, etc. And I'll just leave that at that, and I think, Karen, you are up next.
We've had some problems with our jail. Our jail is currently decertified and we, first thing we did is, when we found out that it was decertified and the liability that it would cause, what we did is, we called the State of Tennessee and got with them the Tennessee, Tennessee Corrections Institute, yes. But anyway, talked to Tennessee Corrections Institute to see what we could do to get that moved forward, to get it certified again. We have several, it's probably not any, you know, secret that lawsuits can come, we do have lawsuits, and it's just one of those things that it can happen and it can happen in such a way because that, we have, we are overcrowded and we have a lot of things going on with the jail, and it not being certified, basically the jail not being certified, it causes a lot of issues there. It's a huge liability for the staff and the prisoners in the county. And what we did is, we invited them up and they came and they spoke with the commissioners at the workshop in September. And hopefully, we're working forward where we can get some things done. And one of the things is, is that Janine Lloyd has got a resolution that she's going to submit because one of the first things that we have to do is create a committee. And it's basically made up of the State of Tennessee staff and, not State of Tennessee staff, but with Dale Young and, and some other people, like the judges, to try and get a good meeting going. So that's what we're looking forward to there. When that committee is created, we are going to meet and brainstorm with the State of Tennessee staff, of course, the sheriff, and C T S and more. And we're going to explore all the options with the estimated cost. One of the things that he talked about was possibly maybe adding on to the jail. He stated the jail could actually be added on to, that it was built in such a way that it would be easier to add on. Of course, what I heard from someone else that was knowledgeable said that it would cost as much to add on, it would increase the, the cost exponentially because you've got to stack the jail, you've got to do all these other things, so it's just not as simple as just adding on to a jail and building it. And there it is. But we're going to try to do our best to work through it and try and get it certified. It can be, if we talk to some judges, that's one of the things, you know, there's such a thing as catch and release, and I know that may not sound good for the citizens, citizens here, but basically, they do it in Rutherford County and other places. If they're not violent offenders, if they're not rapists, if they're not murderers, say for instance, they stole the moon pie, so the moon pie person theft, you know, maybe is not going to go and stay and wait on probation, but going to be able to go ahead and continue about his life, be a productive citizen, and, and basically go into just not have the problem there where his family maybe is not home and, and we're paying the bill. So anyway, when we get through with that, we're going to present the solution before the commission. Do you have anything to say there?
One thing you may apologize, Karen, if I missed it, that they, they, I would tell you to take away on, on that for sure is, we're only one of six jails in the State of Tennessee decertified. And I didn't know if him made that comment. And, and folks, that, I'm not saying that's ridiculous, shameful, but it is. It really is. We're only one of six jails in this state that is decertified.
Would you like to know why we're decertified?
Sure.
We are only decertified because of the illegal population.
Yes, sir.
We are not decertified because of the pain that the staff are dealing with, just to be clear.
Oh, and you're right. One thing that I did mean to say, and I forgot about it. When I talked to these, the people at T C I, they were very complimentary on the jail, how clean it was, how everything was, how it was run, and it didn't have anything to do with the, the people that were here or anything that they're not trying to do good. But when you just overcrowded and they, they basically said, like, maybe, you know, it could be upwards of five people to a jail cell, you know, and, and you're, you're going to have to take your violent offenders and basically separate those out. So if you don't get them separated out, you're running the risk, you know, a risk there. So it's one of the most important things. Also, not only from what I understand... Also, um, not only from what I understand, it's the liability issue. You know, uh, the, a lawsuit can come up, something can happen. We hope nothing does, but, uh, the sheriff, the staff over there can be held liable. And I even read where that, I believe it was in Polk County, that the commissioners were even somewhat liable too. So it's something that, you know, I'm not interested in a lawsuit, I don't know about y'all, but twenty-five dollars is not gonna cover my, my fee for a lawsuit, a lawyer.
Thanks. And I, I apologize, I was not making derogatory comments against the jail, I'm making against that.
It needs to be clarified.
And I appreciate that, thank you so much. No, it's a shame over the middle meters that, that, that has occurred and it's been allowed to be ongoing, to stay, to stay the course. So, thank you so much, appreciate it, all y'all.
Now, we're gonna talk about the ambulance service fund. And, and the ambulance service fund is one of the, uh, it's a special revenue fund. Basically, we have several special revenue funds, but, uh, and basically, what it's done is been broken out into its own checking account. So that way, you can see exactly what's going on. And, uh, the way the county funds the ambulance for services from, uh, fund is from a portion of the property taxes. And, uh, if you'll look, the beginning cash balance is a hundred and one thousand, and the ending cash balance is a hundred and twelve. So we've already borrowed from the school's debt service around fifty-nine thousand for this year, just to let you know. So, and I'd like to contrast that with the last fiscal year. You can't see it right here, but what it is, uh, it started out as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the beginning cash balance. And that means that this year versus last year, we're already at forty-nine thousand dollars less than at the beginning of last year. So we're basically running, just, we're running low again. So... Oh, I, I would appreciate it.
The, as you can see here, if you don't walk, as she just said, is that here is the ending balance of last year, here's the beginning balance, a hundred and fifty K, here's one-on-one, we borrowed twenty-six, back to the numbers now. But then this year, this year, we borrowed fifty-nine K. We started, again, you take this number here, one-on-one, we bring one-on-one up here and we're projected to be flat, that's essentially a hundred and twelve, well, you're, you're ten thousand dollars of good. But you borrowed fifty-nine thousand dollars, nine-hundred and twenty-two, here you borrowed twenty-six thousand dollars, seven-hundred and forty-seven.
Right.
So we're just no better off, actually worse off, not matter.
What about collections? Are they, the late days of them?
We're working, we're, and we're, we're working, we're working at heart, to get them.
All right, now, uh, I'd like to note also, then, uh, last year's audit had the ambulance spending nine-hundred and thirty-three thousand, four-hundred and thirty-nine. Now, remember that figure. This year, they budgeted to spend one million, forty-two dollars, one, one million, forty-two thousand, two-hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That's a hundred and eight thousand over last year's budget. And remember, when Mr. Ronnie was talking about the fund balance policy on page two, I'm gonna read that. "The ambulance service fund is partially supported by property taxes and patient charges. And since property taxes not until eight months into the fiscal year must have a relatively high fund balance related to appropriations in order to support cash flow needs. The fund balance should be sufficient to meet cash flow needs and is calculated at twenty-five percent of the current year appropriation." Those are just some fancy words, but that means that there needs to be a cushion of money to tide them over till the tax money comes in, just breaking it down. So, the budget is one million, forty-two thousand, uh, one million, forty-two thousand dollars. And that was increased from last year's amount, and the, the amount is three-hundred and thirty thousand. It's just, it's, you know, it's just got to be a little bit much there and, and as far as like, the ambulance fund is not part of the general fund, but separate. And for last year's audit numbers, there were nine-hundred and thirty-three thousand in expenses, basically, it's above the median. The collections are a whole different, uh, ballgame. So...
The receivables on that fund run about, run about two-thirds of what those estimated annual cash receipts are, which, you know, I don't have the benchmark for that sort of a, an operation, but that seems really high revenue.
See, we, we, we're just collecting all the money.
Money gets earned, but he'll not get collected.
The money that we spent, the money the organization earned or charges, it'd be like, we've got, we've got books out there that we have to, money or debt out there that we have to translate and receive.
So, Kim, how much did you say the county subsidizing the ambulance?
Twenty-six cents, twenty-six cents, about five, roughly about twenty-five thousand, what it is this year.
So how much was that?
That was five-hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Correct.
And I didn't get to that.
Twenty-two cents on your tax rate is going to the ambulance service fund, which is a special revenue fund, which should basically be self-supporting, okay? That's what that means.
So, you feel like it should be self-supporting, meaning?
It should be close, I mean, I would think. I mean, unless y'all decide that's what you wanna do.
Well, and taking consideration.
You probably still probably took a like that, or?
They do, they have a, they, they, they do have a collection company called, um...
They're not doing a very good job.
Not, not right. They've had some issues. A M, A M B, that's what I wanted to say. And they...
Well, you know, and taking consideration also, of course, three years ago, we wrote off a half a million dollars in debt for that.
A, a collectible, you mean?
Yes, a half a million.
That's half a, that's half a year, exactly. I mean, that's a lot, that's a lot, y'all. Yep. Just one.
One of the things that, um, that I've been kinda interested in is, right after the election, I wanted to tour the ambulance facility. And I just wanted to see what was going on, I wanted to see the new facility, and I wanted to meet with ambulance director Dex Sizem. And I wanted to know the steps, like, what's the steps when an ambulance was sent out, how the run was billed and how it was collected. I wanted to know, I wanted to see the new building, the layout, the ambulances. And heard the director, the dialysis patient passed away, and they say they were making money transporting to a dialysis clinic. And that was interesting because I wasn't for sure that that were, it didn't sound like a great moneymaker to me because that, and, you know, I've always heard that the ambulance needs to be in the county where they can respond to the people, so I'm...
They're transporting dialysis patients to a clinic?
That's what they were doing, they're saying it was making money.
The insurance would cover the cost of the actual...
I never heard of that, I just...
Rental care sometimes with some programs and all sets in your cost, based on the fact that the insurance, it was complicated for Medicare versus Medicaid versus D C A R and then private insurance.
Those are, yeah, I just didn't know that, interesting.
Well, I wasn't for sure whether it was really making money. It was like, uh, another commissioner, they were speaking about it, Janine Floyd, is it, is it really making money? Are they considering gas? Are they considering, uh, any kind of, anything along with that? Like, what is in consideration? And, uh, it really bothered me, so we got to looking around to try to, I got to work at looking around too, and we tried to figure out what was going on with the ambulance service. Why, why was all these, um, you know, writing off the debt, you know, a half a million dollars' worth of debt? And, and ever since that I was following for years, it's always writing off debt, writing off debt, writing off debt. So, one of the things that happened is that I got to speak with Mr. Sizem, and he gave us a financial sh, a summary sheet prepared, prepared by A M B. And that's ambulance medical billing, it's the company that County County utilized for years. And I'm not for sure if they did this year, but what I remember is that it never was really bid out. So, I don't know if it would get better or cheaper, but from what I understand, uh, and they talked about it and said that Rutherford County also had the same billing company, so I'm, you know, but it's just, uh, I thought we were supposed to get everything out, that really bothered me there. But what really bothered me here was the collections. Is that the, the large amount, like, for instance, on the sheet here, and I don't have a copy of that, I apologize. But already, we're scheduled to write off on October the first, this is October the first, seventeen, to September the thirtieth, of eighteen, we're scheduled to write off a hundred and seventy-four thousand as uncollectible debt already. So, which puts, puts me to think, are our collections, are they working? What's going on? Do we have a lawyer? Do we hire a lawyer to go after people, just like, and I'm sorry, y'all, but one of the things that, uh, that Mr. Sizem said is that, or some, like, I think it was he that said that if a person died, they didn't bill. And, you know, if you'll just think about it, you've got to be billing, you've got to bill. A lot of times, Medicare will pick up, the insurance, just because a person has died, you've got to continue to bill. Our county can't afford it. We've got a lot of things going on, we're, we've got a lot of runs that are happening that, um, for instance, if somebody falls down, they take the whole ambulance out and they pick the person up, and they don't bill for that. There's just a lot of things going on that we need to check on. So, we did, we did meet with ambulance committee, we've got an ambulance committee. Hopefully, we're gonna be looking at some of those things. Uh, we met October the twenty-second to find out more about the billing and collections, where the ambulance runs being billed timely, because that's another question, is there a lot of lag? Because I had heard some people say that, you know, they've waited for a bill and waited for a bill, sometimes, you know, months into it, they never, never received a bill. So, I don't know. And I'm not saying anything's bad to anybody, I'm just saying sometimes you need to step up the game and do a little bit better for the people.
Kim, you mentioned that somebody dies, why does it not bill, bill or file a claim against the estate?
That's what I would have thought, but that's what was told.
That is true.
So, the, this ambulance, uh, the company that we hire here, we pay this company twenty-eight thousand a year for their services, and I found that out looking at the two thousand and seventeen audit. And people, this is going in the wrong direction. The ambulance committee has met once and no chair is elected as of this time. We've heard from the ambulance medical billing to impress upon him the urgency of billing with the correct C P T code so the county will receive the most that is billable. It's a business, we've got, we're, we're, we've got to look after the county's money. It's your money. If we don't look after it, then we've got two things that happen, we either cut services or we increase taxes. Or we become more efficient. So, the ambulance billing company stated that they would retrain staff to make sure that the correct codes were being entered. It has everything to do with codes. If the incorrect code is entered, then you don't get as much reimbursement. Uncollectible bills are high, and some of the committee asked that this, asked and stated this was due to Medicaid and T N Care non-payment. Bottom line is the cash flow shows going in the wrong direction. A trans note, the borrowed money and a decrease, decreasing funds from starting morning July to the ending projection in June two thousand and nineteen. Trouble in the media is the prior financial summary sheet that had a write-off totaling a hundred thousand dollars. The sheet came from that meeting covering dates October two thousand and seventeen to eighteen, we're scheduled to write off a hundred and seventy-four thousand. And I didn't know at the time, this was, uh, this was brought to light today, that we had already written off six hundred thousand, so it's actually just for this fiscal year only. And I don't know why, again, but these, uh, these financial summary sheets run yearly, but they don't run according to our fiscal year. So there's really no way for me to see unless I pull all of this out and just write you down it to see exactly what it is. So, and that's all I have. Mr. Brent, do you have anything?
The only thing I'll add is that we got so, uh, our ambulance service cash flow sheets got so close, we got down to roughly seven thousand dollars last month. And, uh, we had to basically daily monitor the amount of, uh, taxes that came in because we was concerned about making payroll on roughly the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of November. That's how close it was with the ambulance service. Whenever you're in, you're in dating mode with the trustee's office, just ensure that we, we can make it, uh, the ambulance service has definitely got some problems. We've got some serious problems ahead, and I appreciate the committee's getting together to help us. We've been, we've been at this, for those of us that's been on the commission, been with us for a couple of years, we're trying to work with the ambulance service, like, like Kim said, we gotta be back. And this is gonna be a serious problem, I believe, so.
And also, uh, with the ambulance service, everybody knows, because it was in the, in the career like a year or so ago, but we still have the pending litigation with the, uh, with the, regarding the ambulance. And I'm not, I cannot say any more, but just to let you all know that we are still in that litigation now.
Folks, y'all been most kind and patient and enduring, and we appreciate that. And we're on the tail end of, of lining up our part of this thing. So I'm gonna talk quick and make sure that it, it's set there very quick. But, moving to education just for a moment, of, uh, I mentioned it a couple of times, but sidestepping from perspective of, uh, they by far have the biggest piece of the pie in this county. Uh, their total budget is a little over seventeen million dollars. And we've been sitting here talking about five million, five-point-five million. The schools here in this county is in excess of seventeen million dollars. Now, that includes everything. That includes our county contribution, it includes the federal levels that are in play that funds the whole bunch, and the state funding the whole...